Deal with a number of matters concerning Under RMA 1 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, pertaining to discussion or consideration concerning 37 non-resident students, four religious exemption students, three student matters, three new hires, four resignations, and one part-time stipend. And Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, pertaining to briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open session would adversely affect the negotiating and litigating posture of the public body.
Subpo.
Second.
Motion to second. Colleagues.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we'd like to do the certification. You spoke about only those things mentioned above.
I certify.
Certify.
I certify.
I certify. Very good. And actions from closed meeting that will be delayed until we go back into closed session, which we'll be doing directly after this part of the program. All right, so now I need a motion to approve the agenda.
We approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Hall of favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I'd like to pose for a moment of silence or reflection or prayer. Now, if you'll join me in the plaid regis. Let's read it. All right, so now we're into our recognition part of our program. We have summer graduation. And that's going to be Mrs. Crowder and Mrs.
Dr. Emes.
And Dr. Emes. There you go.
Thank you. Welcome graduate, parents and family, school board members, and other distinguished guests. The staff of Amelia County High School is excited to honor the hard work and dedication of today's graduate with our commencement exercise. Christopher Nashon Harris. Director Harper, on behalf of the faculty of Amelia County High School, I present this grad candidate for graduation. According to the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Amelia County School Board, the senior has fulfilled the requirements for graduation.
Mr. Harris, the principal has certified that you have met or exceeded the requirement set forth by the Commonwealth of Virginia to be a graduate of Amelia County High School. You have earned all the rights and privileges as a graduate of Amelia County Public Schools by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Amelia County School Board, and on recommendation of the faculty and administration, I declare you a graduate of Amelia County High School. May turn your tassel.
And now we have our recognition of FFA students and staff.
Thank you. On June 9th, 25 FFA members traveled to Virginia Tech to spend the week at Virginia FFA State Convention, where they completed a variety of contests and events. These students had spent months preparing, studying on their own, and attending weekly 7:00 AM practices. Here are the teams and individuals and results. When I call your name, please stand. Flora Culture, Ava Stargardt, Abby Brown, Sarah Martin, and Rihanna Delaney. Youth Service, Delilah Eddy, Jackson Orr, Cassidy Jackson, Abby Ruchak. Employment Skills, Brooke Escobar. Youth Discussion Meet, Carly Mullins made it to the top eight. Agriculture Education, Ava Stargardt, who placed third in the junior group. Junior Prepared Public Speaking, Haley Ford placed third. Veterinary Science, Addison Williamson, Ashlyn Brown, Maddie Harvey, Haley Radford. This team placed in the top 10 and advanced to the second day for the first time in Amelia FFA history. Senior Hippology, Courtney George, I'm sorry, I knew I was going to mention George. George Apollos, thank you. I practiced it, y'all, I promise. I practiced. Shayna Johnson, Bailey Wyant, and Ally Henche. Want to note that Courtney placed ninth high individual. Junior Hippology, Abby Whittington, Haley Ford, Hazel Clark, Jocelyn Cook. This team placed first in the state. You might have seen them crying on stage on Facebook and Instagram. Courtney George Apollos and Austin Stargardt were presented with their FFA state degrees also. We are so proud that we have so many of our members sign up for Courtesy Core, a volunteer opportunity for FFA members during convention. Please stand when I say your name. Preston Baines, Miley Carey, Austin Stargardt, Maddie Harvey, Abby Ruchak, Addison Williamson, Ashlyn Brown, Abby Brown, Rihanna Delaney, Delilah Eddy, Abby Whittington, Cassidy Jackson, Ava Stargardt, Carly Mullins, Austin Stargardt, Jackson Orr, Brooke Escobar, Sarah Martin, Jocelyn Cook, Ally Henche, Hazel Clark, and Haley Radford. Our chapter, oh, go ahead. I also wanted to recognize, oh, wait, one more thing on this page. Our chapter also received awards for 100% membership in public relations and was named a National Superior Chapter. The ACHS Agriculture Department was also recently recognized for earning the Region 8 Creating Excellence Award for their instruction program. Thank you very much.
I'm going to recognize our staff for that. What's the next to your daughter?
Thank you for offering.
Ready, one, two, three. Are we getting one more? One, two, three.
Horse evaluation. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Bye-bye. Congratulations. So many better seats are now available. Now we have Mr. Wheeler.
See, Wheeler, I didn't know Wheeler was over there.
Recognizing retirees.
Good afternoon. At this time, I would like to recognize Lori Paulette, who is retiring from her position as ACMS Principal Secretary. Ms. Paulette served ACMS for 25 years, and we wish her a very happy retirement.
Okay, so now we're up to public comments. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Anybody here for public comment? No.
Not most of staff, what's with?
Right, say none. Round to instructional part of our program. We have a summer learning program update from Dr. Brown.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm happy to present our final summer learning program for this year. Our program concluded on July 10th after 21 days and 105 hours of instruction. ACES had 81 students in attendance. For their summer program, it was called REACH. That stands for Respect, Effort, Achievement, Courage, and Honesty. The middle school had 11 students in attendance and focused mainly on English and Math. The high school had 42 students in attendance. I'd like to share some highlights from summer school on this next slide. As you can see, we have lots of favorite highlights, but some common themes. ACES had high turnout and high attendance, with 83.8% of the students and the attendance rate of 83.8%. They also had data-driven instruction to lead to student growth. Students in grades 2 through 5 completed a pre- and post-assessment using pair-aligned assessments with gradeable standards. They were pulled from benchmark tests. Students were placed into need-based groups in 3 through 5 target-specific courses, and it paid off. 88.3% of students demonstrated growth, with 42.6 showing 15 percentile points or more of growth. 22.2% of students scored 80% or higher on their post-assessment. Those were really difficult assessments. It also built that positive culture and environment. That was a priority. Students attended and wore assembly on the final day to recognize academic growth and their REACH character traits of respect, effort, achievement, courage, and honesty. Students received popsicles every Thursday to recognize their continued attendance and hard work. For the middle school, we also had high attendance rates. We had 81.77% of students attending, I'm sorry, an attendance rate of 81.77%. We also had that high growth and mastery. Really getting into that data-driven approach. 91% of students demonstrated growth on their post-assessments. 100% of English 7 and Math 7 improved, which is a big deal. The average post-test growth, you can see below on the table. English had a 56% growth and Math 7, 29-point growth. 86% of Math 8 students improved, and the average post-test growth was 43 points. And then again, building that positive culture and student citizenship and pride in the environment. Students exhibited their ACMS Raider pride daily in the cafeteria by not only cleaning up after themselves, but wiping down tables and sweeping the floor, taking ownership in their environment. At the high school, we had strong credit recovery, with 42 students recovered credit with Apex or direct instruction. We had many SOL/EOC tests administered. There were 75. We had high credit advancement. More than 30 students earned credit advancement through personal finance, putting them ahead of the game. And again, there's that collaboration to build a positive school culture and promote attendance. The high school also really enjoyed those popsicles. They, some of them, you've incited it as their reason they came to school. And I want to give a shout out to Mr. Henderson for including them in that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Let's continue on in the beginning of the fall so students can hit the ground running about their performances. All right, next, we're also going to hear from Dr. Browning on professional learning plan.
All right, well, this evening, or this afternoon, I'm happy to share our professional development plan. In June, Dr. Gentry presented the Comprehensive Professional Needs Assessment, which was used to drive the creation of our annual professional development plan. As you can see, the first part of the plan outlines those priorities. We want to know what the goal is and how we're going to get there. And so we started our professional development plan by really circling around what our priorities were. As you can see, Tier 1 instruction, which connects directly to lesson planning and student engagement during instruction. Instructional technology resources, get a better understanding of the ones we have and using the new tools that we adopted this summer. Then we want to focus on our instruction for English learning dynamics, our strategies to help implement, as well as instruction for student disabilities, and continue the work that teachers can do on building our instructional leadership capacity. From the next slide, you can see in Amelia, we have a multi-layered approach to professional learning. This overview outlines that approach. We're trying to establish a culture of continuous professional growth and learning through PD sessions, those typically are one-time thing. PD cohorts, those are ongoing over time. faculty meeting highlights, instructional coaching, PLC, or professional learning community meetings, leadership training and development, instructional alignment, and partnerships of educational agencies like NIET, BTSS, and NGLA. As we move through the plan, you can see the multitude of professional learning cohorts and professional learning options we had this summer. As you can see from our schedule, we expanded our partnership with NIET, holding leadership trainings for school and division members throughout the summer. We also continue to focus our Tier 1 and now Tier 2 evidence-based instructional strategies in Math, Reading, and this year, Science. We use financial support from our TSI grants to hold the multiple-day PD cohorts in each of these areas. And we offered, in many cases, more than one cohort to suit people's schedules. Beyond this, we have numerous PD sessions for new staff and returning staff. With each PD offering, we've identified the priority it connects to so that we can establish a clear connection between what we're doing and why we're doing it. Now, during the school year, time for professional learning is a bit limited, but we still find ways to build it in. We're building upon that model that we developed last spring and winter by establishing PLC, or professional development cohorts, in reading and math from August until September using our new TSI funds. We're going to connect it to Tier 1 and now Tier 2 instructions. We're expanding it. The cohorts are also going to focus on that effective student engagement, building our capacity to utilize the meaningful resources that we have from the technology side, as well as expanding our curriculum and then supporting small group differentiation. We're also going to continue to expand our instructional leadership through our collaborative principal walkthroughs, our NIET leadership trainings and onsite visits, and our assistant principal walkthrough and collaborative PLCs. This year, we're going to work closely with our assistant principals to identify topics and formats for those sessions. So we're really going to tailor it to their interests and their needs when we do the assistant principal sessions. We're trying to expand that. We're also trying to foster that culture of continuous professional learning as we expand our monthly and weekly school schedules. So you can see, the schools have developed their own faculty meeting topics that they're going to go into at each school level. And yes, these can change from month to month, but as we look into the school year, this is what we anticipate doing. These topics were identified by the school and their teams based on the needs and priorities of each school. The last two pages of the PD plan include that monthly calendar of instructional professional learning activities at all three schools and within the division. The calendar is organized by week with activities scheduled for each day and by week. This year, we added Friday because when we were looking at what took place last year and mapping it out for this year, we realized Friday was full of professional learning or collaboration as well. And so we wanted to capture that so we can see what we're doing that's helping us kind of move the needle, what's working well and what we might want to refine from year to year. As you can see, we plan to continue our collaborative admin walkthroughs at each school, really trying to focus on not only align lesson planning, but also on the aligned instructional delivery. We've been making such gains to the instructional planning. We're going to continue to expand our aspiring administrators program for this school year, but we're going to find out from interested participants the days and times, as well as the topics and formats that they'll be most interested in. Again, trying to shift a bit to tailor what we're doing to the needs and interests of those who'll be taking part. And that was a big initiative from Dr. Harper. As you can see from the calendar, our approach is multi-layered and ongoing. We have been identifying the Professional Learning Needs Assessment. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No.
That's good. That's good. Again, it goes back to seeing the connection between instructional planning and the results with the kids and trying to capture the data that will flow from that because that's where it's at.
And we'll push up again.
Oh. Well, then I'm here again. I'm here now to present our 25-26 assessment calendar. This year's calendar largely mirrors the calendar from the last school year, but there are some notable changes, so I'd like to go over them. This year, we're only going to map test our gifted students in grades 2 through 8. We recognize that with the VKRP in kindergarten and the VELLS Assessment for K through 3, we didn't have a need to test our kindergarten through first graders using the MAP Assessment. Sorry, Sarah's not here. We want to be able to preserve our instructional time, have meaningful data, but we felt comfortable that the data we were already capturing and as we get more versed in how to use that data, that we no longer needed the MAP Assessment for that population. However, for the gifted population to really see where they are and where they can go, it felt like a very valuable use of their time. Another change, this year, in accordance with the VLA requirements, we are expanding our VELLS testing. This, last year, students in grades K through 3 were tested on this literacy assessment. This year, as part of the VLA, we're also going to be assessing students in grades 4 through 8 who have been identified as needing testing. Those students will be students who did not pass their SOL assessment. And so we already kind of know who they are, and now we know what we need to do, and we're looking at what's in their reading level. We need to impact to help move them toward grade level, and the VELLS Assessment should be able to do that. Students in grades K through 2 will be given an assessment, as they were last year, fall, mid-year, and spring. Students in grades 3 through 8, yes, 3 through 8, so all students of third, but then just identified students in 4 through 8, will be given the VELLS Assessment in the fall and mid-year. They take their SOLs at the end of the year, so we don't have to test them. However, if there was a need where the teacher, reading specialist, administrator, the team, parent felt, you know what, we do want to finish up with that spring assessment. We have the option to do that, but we're not required to do that. So very likely, or be very small populations if any students could need it that. But it would be to inform what we're doing perhaps over the summer and what we're going to do in the following year if we did test that student. An additional change is the end-of-course history PBA. So we're doing this in the first and second semester with each goal. Since it's a new approach, a new testing approach, we're finalizing the window because we really wanted to collaborate with the teachers who are involved in teaching it. They want this to be an authentic PBA assessment and experience for the kids. Since they just got back, we wanted to get back together with them. So that window may adjust slightly. They wanted to embed it within their curriculum a bit so that really is an immersive experience and it's an authentic but reliable assessment. Then the last change is, this year to last year, is our SOL testing window. We're preparing to align our window to legislative requirements that go into effect for the '26-'27 school year. So this year, we shortened the testing window. Previously, it had been about six weeks long. It opened earlier in April. And now we're going to open it for the last four weeks before school ends. When the legislation goes into effect, as it's written now, all schools in, I'm sorry, all schools will be required to test during the last two weeks of school, regardless of the grade or content. So we shortened it down to four weeks, and again, that's as it's written now. So we're preparing. It would have been a significant jump if we went six weeks for a testing window this year and then found that we had two weeks next. So we're just easing into that. That way, we can problem-solve and plan for next year. We're going to open our testing window on April 27. Each school will, of course, schedule their SOL tests and retests within this window at times that work best for their schools and their populations. Happy to answer any questions you may have at the assessment point.
Questions, folks? And last one for you will be the mentoring.
All right, I'm very excited to share some updates about the Mentor Handbook, and this is for informational purposes. We recognize the need to update the handbook with the addition of our new Division Y K-12 New Teacher Mentor. But in addition, as we unpacked many of the ways that this program has expanded over the years as I was onboarding and hearing what we do and then comparing it to the plan, we realized that Amelia had already made some really powerful adjustments to what we were doing, so we just wanted to capture those and our existing plan. To meet credit where credit's due, and when I was going through the plan and hearing all the additional things we did, it felt very necessary to capture those things. So I highlighted the changes in blue on the document. We added the K-12 New Teacher Mentor position, and that mentor helped collaborate on all of these changes, as well as the building-level mentors. We got together over the summer and they were able to get input. And so that's where these changes came from. We also realized that the building-level mentor had never been outlined in here. And again, credit where credit's due, that's a very powerful model. So in talking to them about what they did in order to oversee at their buildings to make this a powerful experience, we captured that here. Over the years, we found that there needed differentiated support between teachers who are new to Amelia and new to the field versus teachers that are just new to Amelia. So we fleshed back out, there was a buddy mentor, and that's a mentor to somebody who's new to Amelia but not the field. And we also, we were calling them mentor teachers and buddy mentors. So we added the word New Teacher Partner Mentor so we could just differentiate that. The New Teacher Partner Mentor, by design, is going to spend more time checking in on their mentee. And so that's why we outlined that. It was what was already happening, and the roles had been divvied up, but we wanted to just capture that. So you'll see those changes. Then, because of the new position with our K-12 Division Mentor, we added some action steps. And these are things that were either already happening and we just changed roles, or these are new things that started this year once that position was created. And so you can see in Goal 1, there were action steps added. In Goals 2 and 3, we simply just changed role assignments. In 4, we added some action steps. And instructional coaching being one of the biggest, most powerful ones, especially with that new position that we have. That's a game changer. And then in Goal 6, again, we had some additional action steps. Very excited to see this program continue to expand and grow, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
There's a New Teacher Partner Mentor?
Yeah.
And then there's a Buddy Mentor?
Yes.
It says New Teacher Partner and Buddy Mentor.
So both of them.
Okay.
So because they are different people for the most part. We do have a few instances where a building mentor is also a New Teacher Partner Mentor, but they can kind of do that dual role. Your building mentor supports the mentors in their building and supports the new teachers in their building and is kind of a bridge to the K-12 mentor, that communication loop. Whereas a Buddy Mentor would be too busy to also be a New Teacher Partner Mentor. I'm going to still workshop in that lab name, but perhaps I'll show a lot of that with that name.
So with the action steps, how were you documenting those? Were you bringing that material into your office? How does that work now?
So what we realized is doing the self-assessment that we did this summer was a really So what we realized is doing the self-assessment that we did this summer was a really powerful tool. So I'd like to see us continue doing that model mid-year, if not quarterly, and then again at the summer. And then as far as some of these steps, they're very easy to document, sign-in sheets and things like that. Instructional coaching, we are actually working together, Ms. Davis and I, on how she's capturing her own kind of log while being able to give, you know, written feedback to them. And the written feedback stays there, but being able to capture on her log, who am I getting to see to what degree. We're also trying to be real strategic about mapping out who needs what. So a new teacher versus a new-to-Amylia teacher will have a differentiated amount of time that she even spends with them. And that was something she and I worked out last Friday to look at.
Any questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for the reports. And now the information agenda, review of policy with Dr. Mendez.
Policy JM is, that's the restraint and seclusion of students policy is required to be reviewed annually by the school board. Our existing policy allows for restraint and seclusion only as behavioral intervention, but also in accordance with the Virginia Board of Education regulations governing the use of seclusion and restraint in public elementary and secondary schools in Virginia. So there's the, the document, the guidelines that go with that. The Goddess Document stresses, as well as our policy, that such restraint and seclusion is not used as a disciplinary measure, but as to keep students from harming themselves or others. Proactive strategies such as de-escalation and proactive supports are encouraged and provided prior to type of restraint. And the Code of Conduct has some examples. All staff receive training through the VDOE sponsored modules through Old Dominion University. And those modules outline information on behavior, behaviors, communication, de-escalation strategies and techniques, and when level restraint, level one restraint can be used. Level two, advanced training, is provided to at least one administrator in the building and for those who work with students who with identified needs through behavior plans, behavior intervention plans, or for students who might be, have a documented history of behavior that may need to be restrained. If a student is restrained, the parent is notified and the incident is documented as part of the communication with the parent. And if a meeting with the parent is held, the team can debrief and discuss any other options or supports. And all of that is in line with the Goddess Document and information from VDOE, but also as part of the regulations that are in the code.
Do you know offhand if the VDOE modules follow a certain restraint curriculum?
No, they do not. In fact, for that level, the level one modules that everyone takes from D O E are pretty generic. They just talk about the generic, you know, it's just simple restraints that a teacher, that's considered restraint, but it may be a teacher holding back a student or holding their hands while walking or something like that that's very minor. The level two portion, the advanced training, is where you may see school divisions that choose MENT. Or we actually use Handle With Care. It was up to school divisions to determine which level two type of training they wanted to, the advanced training method they wanted to use.
Do you know offhand if school security personnel are trained in those things?
So yes, our school security officers are trained. And actually, we do a train, the trainer model with Handle With Care. So we train 10 staff members to be certified trainers so that they can go out and train others. And we always include our, one administrator and our school security officers in that training.
And how is the Handle With Care different than the MENT training?
Um, I mean, I think in, in general, they're the same. Maybe some of the holes might be different. But I think both programs do, as all of them probably do, stress the de-escalation techniques first. And you want to try to exhaust those as much as possible and use the restraint, hands-on restraint, you know, in, in just circumstances where you don't have, when the de-escalation strategies are.
Thanks. I had a question about faculty feedback.
Yes.
On the modules. Do you hear back from the faculty in terms of their opinion of these? Do they find them useful? Do they find them?
Um, I'm not necessarily faculty feedback, and I think part, part of that's because they're required, so.
I know, besides being required, are they getting something happen?
Yes. I think so. We started this a couple of years ago, and, you know, when you finish the training, there are five modules. So it's extensive training. And when we first rolled it out, we did it kind of, we offered the opportunity for staff members to do it together and on the layer, and then others could do it on their own. So there are at least five modules, and they range anywhere from, you know, 20, 30 minutes to 45 minutes to an hour. So it, it goes through the basic things about what behavior is. It goes through de-escalation at the different modules. So I think it helped them to understand better when, you know, as a teacher or staff member, when you, what we would consider restraint and what isn't considered restraint in terms of the reporting level. Because there are certain things that we do as staff when we're intervening and interacting with children that may cause us to step between or put our hands out and whatnot that, you know, hands-on sometimes, some people consider that to be restraint, but that's really not the type of restraint that we're talking about for a level two in which it would be reported to the parent and documented with the formal steps of documented assistance, sending a letter with, to the parent and having those debriefing meetings. So it's very specific to sort of an increased level of restraint. Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on that? Very good. And then I think we're up to facilities update with Mr. Bo Lynch.
Thank you. Good afternoon. All right. We finished paving the high school and elementary school parking lots. This project, which was approved by the CIP plan, included the front and rear lots, as well as the areas near the greenhouse and the gravel lot at ACES. I'd just extend our thanks to the county for the support in making this improvement possible. The art room at ACES now features new tile flooring. We removed the carpet from there. We've also replaced two compressors on top of the eighth grade unit at the middle school. We had two of the three fail during the late summer. We had a total of 92 maintenance tickets, 100 tech tickets, and two transportation tickets closed since our last meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
New cleaning service has started?
Yes, it's starting July.
And your thumbnail take on that?
You know, I think it's, a transition year is always difficult, as it's challenging. Challenges, excuse me, especially since it's July 1st, and you've got 30 days with the old company coming in, roughly 30 days with the new company taking over. So there's been some challenges, but we've tried to work through them. All in all, I think it's, it's been possible.
Have they rehired the same staff?
Um, I would not say completely. Maybe one or two familiar faces, but the majority of the staff are new staff.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Run to our field trip application, Mr. Lynch.
Yes, potential to see this one's field trip request for your review. Be happy to answer any questions.
There.
Food.
Just saying.
Happy you just wanted to know.
When I first looked at this, I thought it was somebody had messed up and put AC, you know, instead of ACPS. Says ACPR. I'm like, let me click on what is in the hell?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I was like, what is that? Good for them.
Yeah.
And it's all during the, within the school day, since I'm during the to and from school for students and whatnot, so.
Good news. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
And Mr. Trump? Answer reports.
Good afternoon. Today I'm sharing with you the post-year fiscal year 2025 finance reports, as well as July FY26 fiscal year reports. As of July 31st, FY25 expenditures and revenue stand at 95.44%. While the vast majority of expenditures for FY25 are completed this time, inventorying textbooks that come in over the summer can take a little while. And we want to make sure we have everything for bills paid. The vast majority of expenditures are complete as of the end of July. Grant reimbursements and revenue, as well as sales tax revenue that's all received in the month of August, will continue to accrue back to the previous fiscal year. And these, and, sorry, significant expenditures such as 10-month staff payroll and utilities and gas bills will still accrue back to FY25 as well. For July FY26, sorry, back up again. Now, for July FY26, to meet our goals, revenue expenditure should be about 4.5%. And we're below that figure at 2.3%. You will note a bit of an anomaly in this month's report as the revenue less expenditures, I actually highlighted yellow, that figure is usually a zero on our reports as we reconcile to zero with the county each month. We also do that on a month-to-month basis. So this, so the county transfer from the month of August, you kind of look at the two reports. That actually covers all of our expenses for the previous fiscal year for FY25 and new in July. And this year, this year, you can see, just with our state funds revenue, this is going to put, we have a little bit of local revenue and state revenue posted for the month of July FY26. And that, just that alone exceeds what we spent in new fiscal year expenses. A big part of this is driven by some expenses that we usually have at this time of year that we haven't had. We haven't paid for ANT-C services for the coming year because we're waiting on the invoice from them still. But this should be coming within the next week or so. So that's really the main difference. We haven't seen this type of thing before. In textbook funds, expenditures are at 5.38% for FY25 and at 0% for FY26. For funds four and five, for all any construction are at 66.62% and 4.11% respectively for FY25. And do not have reported expenditures eroded at this time as those funds have not yet been carried forward. But as you see on the agenda, there's more of that coming. And then in the cafeteria fund, expenditures are at 65.24% for FY25 and at 0% for FY26, as all payments issued in the month of July will all accrue back for FY25 services. That's all I have on these reports. So any questions this time?
Nice. Thank you much.
Thank you.
And now we have fundraising applications from Dr. Harper.
There are 14 requests to date, primarily from the high school.
You're getting out early ahead of it.
Yeah.
And now we have approval of consent agenda. Approval of personnel agenda. Can you have a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do you have any discussion on that? None. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Second is the approval of minutes from July 14th, 2025. You have a motion? Motion and second and discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. About approval of bills and information, Mr. Trump?
We approve the bills and information as presented.
Second.
And motion and second. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Trump already answered my question.
Oh, good.
I know. I had a question, and I went and went further and answered my own question.
That is the benefit of the expanded reports.
Yeah, very much so. I appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, now we're on to action items. The approval of the assessment plan from Dr. Brown.
We approve the assessment calendar as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do you have any questions?
I'm just so glad some apps are gone. Anything else you want to take off there?
Well, I'm very interested in how the DBAs for the social studies people are going to work out. I'd like to have a little log on the wall if you're the guy who's talking about it. We, we have motion and, do they give a second for that? Okay, and any, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we're up to the approval to apply for the VDOE advancing computer science education grant from Dr. Brown.
And Dr. Rini is currently joining. So good afternoon. This time, I'm requesting your approval to apply for the Virginia Department of Education's Advancing Computer Science Education Grants. The ACH math team and administrators and myself are very excited about this opportunity to work collaboratively together to apply for this competitive grant. Our application will follow the option B from the RFP outlined in the request for proposals. Through this grant, we could be awarded up to $20,000 to design a plan and initiatives that will expand access to AP computer science courses for students at the high school level. Proposals, as you can see on the timeline, are due September 8th. Grant awards will be shared in October. If awarded, ACHS would implement the grant from October through June 2026 so that an AP computer science course would launch the following school year. So they'd have all this time to do the groundwork to be ready for the launch. So why? We believe this grant is a great opportunity for ACHS. Currently, we do not have AP computer science. Also, the math team sought this grant out and has had extremely high buy-in, commitment, and excitement about this initiative, even with a short-term amount. There's full administration support from full school administrators, administrators, as well as at the division level. We're committed to collaborating to write a comprehensive plan outlined in the competitive application. We already have a teacher that's very excited about this grant and has the necessary qualifications to teach the course. That's a huge, huge step in the right direction. We do feel we have sufficient time to enact our plan and get approval for the DOE to offer this course at the high school level. Because again, this is designed for schools, the option we're picking, that may not already offer this course. So there'll be a pathway for us to get approval. The funding is going to cover necessary professional development and resources. It aligns with our priorities, and it's going to help our school performance and support framework overall score by increasing the number of students who will complete advanced coursework. But at the most important part, it's going to help our students who have an interest in this and can really excel in advanced coursework that they wouldn't have had the option to pursue if we didn't have this grant. So through the preliminary work, we've been able to establish a general timeline and some ideas for our planning and implementation phases. As you can see from the implementation phase, there's a strong focus on preparing the teacher or even teachers through professional learning and in the course preparation itself. Beyond this, there's a focus on providing student supports beyond the classroom that will help the students prepare for the AP exam, which is critical because just because you do the coursework doesn't always mean that you're able to pass that AP exam. It's very impactful to students who can pass that are particularly at the college level. So our application is going to focus on the following activities. And again, we haven't written it, so we're still in the brainstorming phase. But in general, we know the teacher is going to go to the summer institute for the AP coursework. There's also going to be ongoing coaching and mentoring of the teacher, as well as some mentoring of the students in the coursework. You really want to see the teacher be able to participate in professional learning communities within the region and other schools that are pursuing this grant and have been accepted. We'll be able to purchase curriculum resources with that teacher. And again, this is at ground level, so with the teachers and administrators kind of dictating, what do we need? What is this going to look like? Then we can purchase resources based on that, as well as any technologies. We're going to be doing student recruitment and outreach because some of us may think AP computer science sounds amazing, but some students may not until they realize what it could mean for them. So we're going to do some marketing for students and families because parents may not know what it is. We're going to do informational sessions. We could even have a coding event or something to drum up interest and excitement, not just at the high school level, but even at the younger levels. Because if we start early, someone might discover an interest or talent they didn't know they had and want to pursue this path. There could even be enrichment activities to develop skills. And we're in the brainstorming phase. When we write it out, it'll all be very clear with specific targets and timelines. We also want to integrate with our existing STEM or CTE programs to see if there's any connectivity and ways to build interest. We want to look at student success with that AP exam preparation, even having practice tests, study materials, maybe after-school health sessions. We can kind of dream big in this planning stage, and then as we budget it, see what's going to work for our kids in our context. We want to think about sustainability. So we've already seen, it can fit into the master's schedule. We could be looking at how do we recruit other highly qualified teachers? Are we going to be able to build, building industry and community partnerships, getting guest speakers and mentorship programs? And then maybe being able to expand it if there's enough student interest. So we appreciate your consideration of our request to apply for this grant, and we're here and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks. We have a, you have a motion to accept this?
You bet.
I want a second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments or discussion?
Excited, and thank you for, for working on this.
Yeah, well, the teams, they were very passionate, and they were able to see a path forward. When you have the bind, you can do anything.
Now we just need to make sure that we have the kids in the bodies.
That's right. Yes. Will it count as a math course or?
science or a, I believe this is counting as a math.
It it will be an elective, but it can count for science if.
If you give that.
Alright, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's do it.
Thank you, thank you.
Team three, approval of head start M O U.
Yes, thank you. Actually, we uh just approved this M O U in March after some work. Um however, when we approved it in March, it was good through June. And so pretty much the same thing there except changed dates, so it was going from now until July twenty twenty six, so we're asking.
So can I have a motion?
Yes.
And second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on the M O U? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next.
Approval of religious executives.
Yes, uh I would ask the board's approval for the religious exemption of the four students.
You to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um now we have approval of regulation, Dr. Medley, regulation E B.
Yes, regulation E B is a regulation that we added because of an updated policy that was just approved in July. And the updates to the policy include uh additional requirements related to additional procedures around maintaining brief control kits. Opioid intolerance, A E Ds and cardiac response plans. So those were added to the policy. And so we just developed the regulation because now we're getting to several different things and drills. Just want to have a regulation to outline those uh procedures. So the regulation brings us up to date with those additional requirements. We have stocked medications in our clinics that include our bural, epinephrine, Narcan. Um in the event that we need to use in an emergency situation and so that's available to all students if they need it, regardless of a doctor's order. Because those are emergency medications. With the updated regulation, updated policy, we're required to also conduct a cardiac response drill annual. So that's something that we will be starting this year. Um and so we will be uh working with our folks in each school trained in C P R and teams to be able to respond if there's a cardiac emergency, um to be able to handle that. Um we also have A E Ds in every building and we also have portable A E Ds that we send out with our sports team, I believe it's five or six of those. So this was actually a regulation that we, I enjoyed writing as it dealt with that because because of the school health workforce grant that we received, the blind heart received a few years ago, we were able to maintain the A E Ds and get these additional um A E Ds in our, in the hands of our staff. It's, yes, it grants, absolutely. Um and so a portion of this regulation also um covers the crisis response from the division in the event of fire and evacuation procedures. And those things are largely covered in our crisis plan anyway. Um but they just wanted to like assimilate those in this new policies. So we developed the regulation and we are asking for your approval for the regulation.
We have a request for approval of regulation?
Go for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second, we have any questions or comments or concerns or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And uh Dr. Wheeler, we're down to you on a list here for approval of O D U's M O U.
I see.
A B C D.
I see.
Good afternoon. We are seeking your approval for the memorandum of understanding between Oldman University. Um this purpose of this M O U is to delineate the process by employees of Amelia County Public Schools to be eligible to receive a twenty five percent tuition discount for specific graduate courses.
Go for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second, we have any discussion or questions about this M O U? It's a good opportunity. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is. Thank you, sir. Uh Mr. Trump, appropriation of all in and construction funds.
Good afternoon. We have an appropriation request for your review approval this evening uh to carry forward remaining state funds for recent one-time initiatives. As of the end of F Y twenty five, remaining all in funds total one hundred ninety two thousand dollar, one hundred ninety two thousand thirteen dollars and twenty two cents. We are requesting these funds be carried forward to support the continuation of tutoring services for students at the elementary and middle schools. As of the end of F Y twenty five, of remaining state construction funds total one million one hundred ninety seven thousand four hundred sixty nine dollars and fifty cents. We are requesting that these funds be carried forward as well as support future projects aligned with the laws appropriating these funds to school divisions. The state budget language for each of these items stated that these funds are too appropriate for the initial purposes until expended. And while there is not a required expenditure to state construction funds, I do want to note that all in funds are required to be expended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. No match is required to carry forward these funds other than needing qualifications for requiring those lack of matching our expenditures as we do annually.
Okay, so we have a request for carrying forward from these funds from all in construction funds.
Move.
Second.
You have a motion and we have a second, any discussion, any questions? So we looking pretty good in terms of being able to get the expenditures done by June sixth or June twentieth?
All in, um in the last few years, this was over seven hundred thousand dollars. Um so and really all in expenditures didn't really kick in 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 really earnest until almost halfway through that first year. And as you can see, we've spent over five hundred thousand and primarily it's just pushing tutors in the billions as much as possible. Dr. Brown has done a great job looking at kind of our tutoring lists and those plans and has kind of looked at how we're going to spend those funds down west division.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, sir. And one more time for you, approval of requested budget resolution for carry forward of remaining F Y twenty five state funds.
Yes, so this is a night I talked about for the last two board meetings and now we have the final form approved by our attorneys. Presented for your approval this afternoon is the revised version of the budget resolution prepared for the board supervisors. As I shared last month, the purpose of this resolution is to ensure that A C P S and the accounting staff are working with the same foundation towards the same goals and close on F Y twenty five financial processes. The changes made to this resolution were suggested by our attorney in a representative effort to make this request as simple and clear as possible. Um simply just putting the language of the law regarding our school funds into that resolution for the county.
Okay.
No approval.
Second.
And most we have a second, we have any questions or comments, discussion?
That's very easy to read.
It is, thank you for keeping it that way. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch, approval of S R O M O U?
Yes, sir. Tonight we're seeking your approval of the attached S R O M O U between Amelia County Public Schools and the Amelia County Sheriff's Department. The goal of this M O U is to provide or to promote a positive and supportive school climate as well as create and maintain a safe school environment. This M O U defines responsibilities of the school division, the sheriff department, as well as the school resource office. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have our M O U before us? Any motions?
So.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Uh we're agreed. Uh what else we got? We have uh you again for the approval of the twenty twenty six school safety personnel grant program.
Yes, we're requesting your approval to apply for the D C J S safety personnel grant. Uh this grant is similar to the S S O and S R O grants we've worked with in the past. Um the sole purpose is to prevent crime and violence, promote safety for our students and staff. This funding would allow us to hire a division safety coordinator. This typical role would oversee all of our school safety and emergency management programs. From reviewing crisis plans, safety drills to ensuring compliance with all state laws, including those pertaining threat assessments and mandatory reporting. This person would also be a critical link between our schools and law enforcement, fire and E M S. And they would manage our physical security and conduct annual school safety audits. Based on our composite index, our local match for this grant would be a maximum of thirty eight thousand dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, we have a proposal here for a grant program. We have a motion?
You do.
Hmm, I need a second.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second for approval of the school safety personnel grant. Any questions?
Is that something, I mean, we're such a small division. Do other small divisions have that sort of?
I I'm not sure, man.
Position?
Um I think most of the time it's a hat carry.
Right.
With other duties. Um but the way safety is a priority.
Absolutely.
Supposed to have someone, in my opinion, that's, the sole purpose is to save your students' cash for Amelia County Public Schools.
Well, in in reading your, the narrative and the demonstration of need, um it just really makes you aware of all the different things that the director of operation does, technology, maintenance, transportation, security. All those things, it's a lot for a person. So you know, if we can get grant money to have that position?
Agreed.
I'm all for it.
Is that a motion?
No, I guess, I guess what I was asked, I I confess, I didn't read the entire application. Did it have a caveat in it for recognizing that this is a hard thing for smaller divisions to?
I don't believe so. Um I think this is it's going to be similar than the S S, to the S S and S R O grants where it would be like a uh a four-year type thing. From the way it looks with D C J S, it looks like this will be uh a continuance of those. In other words, if there, if there are requests for a s- school security officer or if there's a request for a school resource officer. Um those would get precedence over this this new personnel. But again, this is, this is a new grant that uh you know, kind of came across, so we'll see how how things go. I know the decisions are probably, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it's December, January of when the award for this grant would would be released.
But it does require a match from the county.
Yes, and that's based on composite index.
Starts with that.
Starts with that.
I will accept that.
Okay, we had a motion and we had a second, so all in favor? Aye, thank you, Mr. Lynch. And and now we're over to the Mr. Lynch again show, approval of school security grant application.
Yes, um the test you'll find a copy of our D O E's security grant application, um as well as an approved equipment list. Um this is the typical yearly grant that the Department of Education puts out. Items that can be included on this grant, there's an extensive list, there's just to name a few. Technology hardware and software, uh security vestibules, security doors, firearm or metal detection, gunshot detection. Uh fencing, security lighting, panic systems, vaping detection, motion detection. Almost anything that you can list as a security need, um even if it's not listed, D O E has been willing to work with.
Yeah.
Um the maximum award for this grant is two hundred and fifty thousand, which we've been awarded the last few years. Um which requires a local match of twenty five percent or sixty two thousand five hundred dollars. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a mo- do we have a motion to approve this?
You.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion, any questions? I guess I do, um why, but it's a shame we have to be considering so many different forms of security in our school systems anymore, but there it is. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we're at our approval of this B S B A policy service contract, Dr. Harper.
Uh this is an annual renewal. As um just as a reminder, uh B S B A po- provides the policies that we use at any time. Uh the school board may choose to have their own policy in addition to B S B A policy. So we're seeking your approval for uh continuing with their policy services.
Okay. We have a motion to accept that?
Yes.
Uh you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're going to take a quick five minute recess.
Yeah, and my my report is a simple one sentence.
Sorry.
At the B S B A Legislative Act, you see conference is September nineteenth at the Chesterfield C T E Center. We have two board members um registered to attend with me and if anyone else is interested, please let us know. Thank you.
Very good, that's our superintendent report. Um of course, we want to do our school board member reports now?
Sure.
We'll take our five minute.
How about, should we just do our our reports then we go close?
Yeah.
Okay. Have a M A X regional governor school meets Thursday.
Uh, Governor School, Southside Virginia, we have a meeting in um end of July and we have a lot of new members, so we will be sort of uh how funding and slot of botnet works, just sort of the processes involved and all that. Um and they are already planning, planning, planning for this coming year, they were at that point, and I'm just excited to hit the ground running. And I'm excited about tomorrow, my house is going to be so quiet. But everybody out there, please remember that we aren't doing sixteen extra minutes at the end of the day, so readjust your brains, your clocks to the original end that ending times for each school.
Um A N T C, we met last Thursday. Just a quick, a brief meeting, but it was important because we had a banking change, we had to change banks. Um and that's going to actually save us some money over the long line. And then we had some H V A C needs that we were appropriating funds for. Um and um I was happy to get all um text messages and emails from all three schools last night and I got the rain twice and I watched the video, I'd never watched the video of the car loop before, so I watched the video last night with car loop, that was, that's pretty cool. It was from last year, I think, but it was, you know, watched the video, so I'm excited for tomorrow. Do you have volunteers that are coming to help you with lots of things?
You have lots of volunteers?
You, oh, you're shaking.
Central office directors will be, there'll be at least one at each school.
Well, I'm told.
Mm-hmm. Can we come and assist? Okay, I'll wear my little badge and come float around.
I want to wish you all the best for a great first day and all the kids and all the parents and it started on a brand new year and hit the ground running, as I said earlier, just doing well, doing well. Uh now, do you want to do our motion to close?
Will we move, will we move to a closed session?
Okay, I have a, I have to read something first.
That's true.
Alright, uh we need a motion to go into closed meeting for discussion of matters covered under item A one of section two point two dash thirty seven eleven of code of Virginia nineteen fifty eight. Amendment pertaining to discussion or consideration concerning student matters and personnel matters. And it says here as well.
Second.
Second, and you just go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're in closed. And we need a little more recess.